Thank you. With that, I'd like to call on trustee Perry to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you so much. Is there any discussion on the order of the agenda this morning, board members? Okay, seeing none, we will start with the President's report, which always I keep sort of brief. We had, in TV, they sometimes have crossover episodes where a special star from one TV series stars in another, and we kind of got that yesterday in the Board of Governors with Michael Young presenting to us. And I think it really just shows what we all know, that there is a broader good within the community college ecosystem that Calbright can serve. And I think yesterday, we had a very robust discussion on workforce development, and it was so apparent to me, kind of the expertise and really the innovative thinking that Calbright is leading, that can help all of our sister colleges as they think through, kind of how to better serve in this space. So anyway, it was just really great to hear from him, and I am hopeful that other districts took note of the expertise, and we'll call upon Calbright to assist them as they think through their own workforce development programs. That's all with that, I'd like to turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you so much, and good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I will be brief this morning as well, because we have a packed agenda. With full funding for Calbright included in this year's state budget, the entire Calbright team is now returning its complete focus to our growth and development. Earlier this month, we surpassed a student body of 3,000 students. And while the increase is welcome, it's really, as I've always said, who enrolls that's more important. Our learners call 51 of California's 58 counties home, and more than 90% of our students are at least 25 years old. These demographic figures reflect Calbright's mission, and they also serve as a preface to this really pivotal moment within the community colleges system. I am just elated to see adult learner success displayed so prominently in the CCC's new Vision 2030 roadmap, and I know that Calbright is well positioned to advance this vision, as well as Chancellor Christian's priorities. When the vision framework calls for a focus on students with dependence, working adults, low-income students, it's calling for a focus on Calbright's student body. And when it calls for increased access and completion rates with a focus on equity, it recognizes the core of our operations and the work that we do. By naming these priorities, the Chancellor's Office continues to validate our mission. The systems share challenges around adult learner success, and really, the urgent need to create solutions in order to help propel California forward. As a part of this momentum, we bring forward several new roles for the board approval, as well as 13 new members of the Calbright team. From faculty and student services to technology and workforce development, every part of Calbright is growing as we expand to meet the needs of our rising student population. I just wanted to pause for a second and let you know that it's been such an honor to serve this institution. I am really humbled by our learners and the Calbright team. And I'm particularly excited by the potential of this college and the opportunity to lead this college into the future. Later this morning, you'll hear an update regarding our partnership with UC Irvine Nudge Labs and Ideas 42. And I won't provide a spoiler alert here, but I will share that while the outcomes we've seen are exciting, it's really the process through which we work that has been completed that's perhaps more important than anything to highlight. This initiative has really brought together every part of the college as we collaborate to solve the very complex equation of adult learner success. There isn't just one silver bullet we can implement, but instead, a real sequence of thoughtful shifts that amplify one another. The how we do our work gives us the insight we need to understand what's working and what's not, and most importantly, why it is the case. This allows us to rethink what has been done before, to really push beyond historical assumptions that have calcified inequitable outcomes in higher education, and to really move confidently in the ways our learners need us to, towards rapid and continuous progress. And there is far more that is yet to come as the team continues to explore every facet of that student journey. We won't be turning over a new leaf, as they say, as we begin the next academic year, but instead, we'll continue to build on our successes, accelerating on the same path to expand our impact as we continue to learn, to grow, to test, to iterate, to optimize, and to improve. I just wanted to thank you, President Costa, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. The board will now move into closed session. Pardon me, we have one item on the closed session agenda. Public employee performance evaluation, president and chief executive officer. Is there any public comment on the closed session item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. With that, we are estimating somewhere between 60 and 90 minutes for this item, and we will reconvene at that time. Thank you. Great, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We were efficient, so we did not need the full hour or 90 minutes. I do have a report out from closed session. The Board of Trustees of Calbright is very happy to announce that we are renewing our employment contract with President and Chief Executive Officer Ajita Menon. President Menon has served as Calbright's president since August 1st of 2020. Her current employment contract was for a three-year term with an end date of July 31st, 2023. The board is pleased with President Menon's leadership and service, and is excited to retain Ajita as our president so that she can continue to build upon Calbright's current achievements and provide stable leadership during the next three years of Calbright. The Board of Trustees will now vote on a new agreement with President Menon. Under California law, as the board president, I am obligated to verbally announce all the salary and benefit provisions of the agreement. Once I announce the monetary provisions of the agreement, we will have a board discussion and public comment on the item. Then, we will vote. The terms of the new employment agreement with President Menon include: A three-year term beginning on August 1st, 2023, with a base salary of $363,582. Retention increases that recognize her continued service to Calbright in the amount of $15,000 at the beginning of the second year, and $20,000 at the start of the third year. Should the employment contract be extended for a fourth year, an increase of $25,000 would apply on August 1st of 2026. Annual salary adjustments that are consistent with increases approved in the collective bargaining agreements with a classified unit during the term of this agreement. A monthly vehicle allowance in the amount of $500. Reimbursements for travel consistent with the board's policies, and payment or reimbursement of necessary expenses incurred while participating in meals or events on Calbright business. And a monthly phone and internet stipend totaling $100, which is offered to all Calbright employees. Membership in Calpers and health benefits, including employer contributions to both, that are both set by statute and equal to those currently offered to all Calbright employees. A one-to-one match of employees' contributions to a voluntary retirement plum, plan up to the maximum allowed by IRS law. Leave rights such as vacation and sick accruals consistent with other Calbright employees. With that, trustees, I open it up for discussion.
I move approval.
I second.
Okay, we have Haynes with a motion and Anderson with a second. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Wonderful. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elani Kounalakis. Perry Legrand. Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings. Mary Salas.
Aye.
Blas Villalobos. And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Our next item is the consent portion of the agenda, section three. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda in whole, or do people want to separate it?
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second on the item. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment.
Okay, with that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the action section of our agenda. And first up, we have item 4.2, Agreement with Temporary Technology Staffing Providers.
Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the board. I'm here to request your approval on five agreements with temporary technology staffing providers who have been selected through a procurement, a competitive procurement process, RFP 23-003, to provide on-demand temporary staffing personnel for the Calbright technology team for up to $575,000 per fiscal year, for an initial term of one year, with an option to renew for up to four additional one-year terms. To provide some background, the Calbright technology team continues to build our system, technical systems, for servicing the needs of our students and staff. These systems enable Calbright to accomplish key business functions, ranging from student outreach and course delivery to recording interactions with each student, tracking student progress, and enabling wraparound services for student support. While Calbright efforts to recruit and hire full-time staff are ongoing, the current need to maintain and build Calbright technology infrastructure are significant. And as we work towards building these systems to their steady state, some of the heavy lifting needed to achieve that steady state requires some additional temporary support. Therefore, on May 1st, 2023, Calbright issued an RFP 23-003 for temporary technology staffing services. We received 33 proposals, of which 17 passed the minimum qualifications screening conducted by Calbright procurement using the criteria set forth in the RFP. The RFP Evaluation Committee then scored these proposals using criteria such as company profile, expertise and qualifications, proposed staffing and implementation approach, cost, and their attempt to hire conversion policy. The top scoring five firms were then selected through this process to be added to the roster, and client reference checks were conducted on all. With the board's approval of these agreements, Calbright will have a roster of vetted providers from which Calbright can procure temporary resources with specialized expertise whenever needed. Working with these providers will help achieve time and cost efficiency in building out a technology platform, allowing us to adapt and scale with the evolving needs of our programs, our staff, and students during this startup phase. Staff requests that the board approve a cumulative expenditure of $575,000 per fiscal year under these agreements in order to have the ability to procure services as needed with an option to renew the agreements for up to four additional one-year terms.
Trustee Anderson?
I had a question, because you talked about ongoing, trying to find the right people to come on board. If so, then why are we going ahead and giving four one-year terms? You think, I mean, ultimately, will we have our own staff in-house? Or are we going to continue to outsource these type of services?
Absolutely. So, we are, right now, we are building out the foundational technology platforms, and we are continuing to hire, making attempts to hire people for full-time roles. So, but these needs tend to be, they come up when any new system that we plan for, and we need some specialized skills around that, which tend to be of a short-term nature, you know, projects for scope of services. So that's one. And then we anticipate that it will gradually go down also, as we get to a more steady state. So, but we just have this, we want this mechanism so that we're able to bring on people as and when needed for these short-term services.
Trustee Anderson?
Yeah, I just wonder why five separate contracts? It seems like an enormous administrative burden. You've got to, you know, orient each of these companies to what we're doing. I mean, what's the point of having so many different contractors?
So, you know, the idea is that when we spread our solicitations around on a larger vendor pool, we benefit in terms of the quality of the service, because it creates the condition for a healthy competition amongst these providers. So both in terms of the cost, you know, they'll provide better competitive cost structure, as well as quality of services. It's a, the vendor pool idea is typically used by public agencies to, for just that purpose, to get better quality and better cost. And then, we can, we create a vendor pool of five, so it's not too onerous to, you know, if it goes beyond that, then it can be a little bit, like you're saying, burdensome. However, our contract is pretty much the language, except for a single clause around the attempt to hire conversion policy, is pretty much standard with all of these.
I'm going to confess.
Can I add one thing? Sorry, I just wanted to add one small thing, which is, because the pool exists does not mean we need to exercise options across all of the vendors, either equally or all at once or ever. And so, it gives us the ability to retain the flexibility to access whatever specialized, you know, skills, talent, needs that we have in the short term. But it doesn't keep us beholden to a single vendor. So by doing this upfront in an RFP process like this, we are able to maintain a pool like that. If you, if you recall, we did something similar in the space of legal services. So for some of these specialized services where we're looking for specific things and want to have the flexibility to go to different vendors to access that, it allows us to have that flexibility without requiring us to pursue it through just a single vendor or to retrace our steps and have to do it all over again in ways that are inefficient.
Well, I'm going to confess, I know absolutely nothing about technology, so. But it just, it just does seem odd to me that you wouldn't get a better price if you concentrated it all on one vendor, and that, you know, that vendor would become more of an expert in our system just using one or even two, but I will trust you.
I'll say, I really encourage the staff to use this pool. It's very common in local government, because your RFP process is so long. And the other thing is, it does provide operational flexibility in these core areas, where if one vendor doesn't have the time or the personnel, you have another choice, and there's no break in service. And, you know, in law, in particular, it's very common, because you might want to have a pool, and I'm assuming technology is the same, where you have a broad range of specialty. So like in a legal pool, you might have somebody who's very proficient in employment law, someone else who's very proficient in contract law, so that you have kind of one RFP that brings all of those expertise under one tent. Board member Haynes and then board member Williams.
Yeah, I'm going to just follow in agreement on that. Having served on a Board of Trustees in the district for 24 years, we do it because we hire for employees, we tend to keep them a long time. It changes, and one would expect that one would keep up with the training. That becomes an overall issue, but especially around technology. The challenge is that that is changing, and the requirements of the state, the requirements of the industry, i.e. education, is changing quickly as well, and what those needs are. And so, the difference is, now, community colleges have to hire those kinds of professionals or consultants over time at huge cost of anywhere from a half a million dollars to a million, $2 million. We're doing that with a CRM contract, because we now have technology needs that cannot be, that cannot be reinvented within our employee pool. And so, and that's going to ultimately be a five-year contract that's $2 million. So, it's, it's, it ultimately can be costly on other, but we don't have necessarily the flexibility. Calbright has the flexibility of trying to figure out what its needs are, and it may be temporarily, and then building upon that. So I think it's a good, it's a good model for what Calbright is trying to do relative to an infrastructure that is adaptive and agile and flexible and can change in a much shorter time than some of our more traditional methods.
My question is just a little bit different. I'm still going to claim to be the new guy. I'm still fairly new, and, you know, we approve contracts and, you know, hear the conversation. For me, it would really be helpful to just experience some of the technology, to see what the students see. Because it's a bit different than other colleges. You can walk into a classroom, and I still haven't experienced Calbright yet, and so it will help contextualize some of the business decisions that we're making. If I could have a way to interface with all of the technology that we are hearing about in the meetings, and so, like, want to interact with it in some type of way. So if there was a way that we could arrange, that we could actually experience the college, it would help me a lot, especially when I have to vote on a $500,000 item, then, you know, I can put it in context.
Absolutely. So, we're building a lot of these systems right now. So we have a delivery mechanism for the students with a, through a student portal, for example, where they access all of their learnings and added services. What we're doing right now is, we're working on transforming that into a much better digital experience. And so, a lot of the work that I mentioned here is in that direction, building the backend systems that will serve that student experience, a better student experience, as well as on the front end, you know, making it more attractive to the student through their learning experience. And I'll make note of this. We'll certainly try to do a demonstration of that in the near future as we get it to, towards a steady state.
Trustee Salas.
So I just want to mention that I'm fully supportive of this item for a lot of the good reasons that some of the trustees have already mentioned. You know, serving in local government for the years and years I did, it's very common to take a pool of different disciplines and businesses and have that as a source of immediately being able to contract with somebody, instead of, like you said, going through the RFP process. I think it's the most efficient way to do things, and I think it's the most efficient way to make sure that you're getting technology experts that are current. Because I know with our own IT department in the city, and really even in the state, is that they're, they're, I don't want to say they're backwards, but they're not versed in the most current.
They're the Lexi systems, was what we called them.
Is that what you call it? Right. And then, and so, the, you know, they're used to repairing and fixing the systems in place, not the innovation. And so I think that, for that reason, I think this is a very, very solid way to go, and I'm fully supportive of this, and I would love to offer the resolution.
Great. Before we do that, I'm going to open it up. Okay, so we have Salas with the motion, Anderson with the second. I'd like to open it up for a public comment on the item.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elani Kounalakis.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you. With that, colleagues, I'd like to backtrack slightly and go back to our first item coming out of closed session, item 4.1. I'd like the liaison to open the roll for members who weren't present to add on to the vote.
Thank you, President Costa. I'd like to offer an i-vote on the last item.
So recorded. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Governor. Next up on the action agenda item, we have item 4.3, which is a presentation on the Executive Committee meeting dates for 2024. I got a motion from Epstein. A second from Perry. With that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. With that, I think we can call the roll.
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elani Kounalakis.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great. Thanks. We will invite Carmen back up for our next information report item, 5.1, which is a update on the 2024-27 strategic vision.
All right, good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and trustees of the board. As you may remember, this past May, we had two members of the People Rocket team, Mike and Ari, walk us through the process and timeline for the Calbright 2024-2027 strategic vision. Michael Tempelador, Associate Principal Designer, and Ari Kurtz, Senior Principal Designer, have both joined us this morning. And this time, they're joining us virtually to provide us with updates on the strategic vision timeline, walk us through some preliminary research findings, and give us a glimpse into what is happening next. Though Mike and Ari will also allow time for questions at the end, please consider this conversational presentation. All right, Michael and Ari, are you both on the line?
We're here. Yes, thank you, Carmen.
And President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, members of the Board of Trustees, it's a pleasure to be here with you today to update you on progress on the next Calbright strategic vision. We have been working closely with the core team, which is a small group made mostly of executive team members, with the executive team itself, with staff, with many of you and with stakeholders. And we are delighted to date with the engagement, the enthusiasm we've seen for the project, the interactions we've had and the progress we have made. So if we can jump to the next slide, please. What you see here is a high level overview of the timeline for the project. And what you see here, it shows that the project is linear or it sort of makes it feel linear, but in reality, what we have is something of a spiral and cyclical project. So we may, for example, do some research, which you see on the left-hand side, and then reflections on some of the insights from the research and realize we need to go back and do more research, jump around a bit from phase to phase. But in all, you see the progress we're trying to make across the board on the project. We are right now in the stage of reimagining the future. So we've come a little bit farther than what you see on the slide. The red indicates where we are right now. We are working with the team and have had and continue to have workshops and are brainstorming and ideating what that future could look like. And just for a little bit of clarity, where you see the envisioning the future stage, that's where we think about all the possibilities that Calbright College could have. Reimagining, which is just above it on the right, is getting a little bit more tactical and concrete, and that's where we are now. And we're going to walk you through what's happened to date and some of the progress that we've made. And once we're done with that, we'll talk also a little bit about what's still left to do. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael to present the highlights of the engagement so far. And if we could go to the next slide, please.
Thank you, Ari. So I'm going to provide you some research updates and People Rocket uses a mixed methods approach. So we talk to people, we observe, we survey, we look through the landscape, landscape. And so I'm going to just provide some, some highlights of kind of what we've learned so far. So we go to the next slide. So one of the first things tactics we employed was stakeholder interviews. So we conducted about 12 stakeholder qualitative interviews with state agencies, philanthropic organizations, receiving partners. And a lot of these questions really are about exploring their views, experiences, beliefs and motivations, and all kind of trying to get under like, what are the strengths, opportunities and threats for Calbright? And here are just some highlights and overview of kind of what we found so far. So if you want to go to the next slide. So if you look at the orange ball, we're not going to read these all to you word for word. And I know you have them in front of you if you, if you'd like to indulge yourself, but one of the major things we heard is just around Calbright moving in the right direction, building momentum in the, in the right, in the right direction, and just starting to think about how you can consistently engage with potential funders, maintain a strong presence in their radar. I think some other things we've kind of heard was just like some of the challenges of navigating the scrutiny and slow nature of a change in the, in the public systems, along with lots of bureaucracy and complexity that could kind of compete with project, also progress. And another interesting just kind of thing we learned was just the pipeline of 18 to 24 year olds is dwindling to decline birth rates posing a challenge for the existing infrastructures and institutions designed for this age group. So just a couple of highlights of some things we've kind of pulled from our, our qualitative interviews with some of those stakeholders. You want to go to the next slide? Another tactic kind of used was focus groups. And so we had two focus groups that ranged from five to 10 participants. One focus group was with students and the second was on state agencies. And these were really around getting underneath the challenges, frustration, likes and dislikes among these stakeholders and opportunities in the future. And so here are some themes we kind of uncovered. If you want to go to the next slide. Uh, next slide. So the, the student insights were overwhelmingly positive. So one is other certifications lack the supports for comes in the field accredited Calbright for having a unique and compassionate approach to learning. And it's something that we, we have heard in some of our workshops too, that was very important, this idea of compassion. And so students are recognizing that. Another, another really positive, the one in the gray, one student was talking about how they're really, they kept waiting for like the ball to drop. And there was no hidden paywalls or surprise costs. And that really was surprising to the student based on the support they're getting. And then finally, the orange quote is just kind of acknowledging that certification is kind of only part of the battle towards employment and how much persistence and significant investment of time to navigate the job search processes. And that alone feels like a full-time job itself. So students still have that, their eye on that prize for, for employment. And so that's something that still remains to be top of mind for them. Go to the next slide. And then we've also conducted a landscape analysis where we analyzed over 10 sources. We looked at the strategic vision, media sources, board of trustee sessions, program offerings, et cetera. And this is really trying to get understanding like, what are you currently offering and where might there be opportunities and challenges to inform strategic decision-making? Uh, next slide. Here's a little sample of one piece of the landscape analysis. So one thing that we thought was really exciting, and I think as well, was well said in the beginning of this meeting was that Calbright's diverse demographics across identity and geographics really match their mission. So that's, you can see through the, the analysis of demographics and geography that the, the students represented are well, well diverse in geography and in race as well. Uh, next slide. And finally, we are conducting one external survey with stakeholder, with state agencies, SHRM, CBOs and receiving partners. And just trying to get the opinions and attitudes of key target populations. We're still very much in the process of getting additional responses for that survey as well. So next slide.
Can I ask what a SHRM is? I, I have to say, one of my pet peeves is I really, really hate acronyms.
Yep. SHRM is HR resource is a state, is I forgot what the S stands for.
Human Resources Management.
Society for Human Resource Management.
Go for it, Carmen. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Society for Human Resource Management.
Great. Any other questions about the research before I jive into more updates? Great. So in our process, we use something called co-design workshops and co-design workshops are interactive, engaging co-design sessions. We're really designing with the participants in those meetings. And so actually a couple of board of trustee members participated one. Additionally, we had one with the Just Be Collaborative. And then we've also had one with the executive team as well. And they're highly collaborative and they're really about we're really designing opportunities for us to get creative and reimagine what Calbright can look like in the future. So next slide. The first, the first workshop was with the executive team and we actually co-designed a business model canvas in various different ways, but the real outcomes of this activity is kind of check on the alignment. Is the value proposition matching the way that the executive team identifies their value proposition? Gain insights into Calbright's business practices and strategies and then spark innovative thinking. Uh, next slide. And here are kind of some of the things that we kind of learned through, through, through these activities. So first, we need to, the first bullet is we need to make it clear that Calbright creates value for both the supply and demand side of the labor market. The second bullet is we need to find Calbright's role in servicing multiple market segments. Third bullet is Calvert will likely need to identify new revenue streams. The fourth bullet is Calbright is well positioned to use technology to continue supporting students. And the last bullet is Calbright recognizes the need in the next strategic vision to articulate its operational goals and priorities. If you want to go to the next slide. So insights from that workshop will kind of feed into this kind of graph. And so this was really setting the foundation for goals, priorities and strategies to really use in the co-design, in the design of our next workshops. And so we use a lot of these insights to kind of frame up where we were going next. Uh, next slide. Great. So kind of looking back and moving forward of a couple more updates for you all. Next slide. So what we've kind of done so far, so in April through June, we've really dove into our research and we're still conducting some research and talking to people as well. But we've talked to a lot of stakeholders, conducted landscape analysis, focused group and survey analysis. Since the business model canvas workshop or workshop one, we've conducted two additional workshops. One, as I said, with Just Be Collaborative and one with the executive committee on the Board of Trustees. And we've really started drafting out potential goals and areas of focus for the next three to four years. And then we've been meeting weekly with the core team, which is the state of, which is a collaborative of both People Rocket team members and Calvert team members to really make critical decisions, continue to help this community engagement and give the People Rocket team the feedback needed to kind of move the strategic vision forward. Next slide. What's next? So we have one more additional co-design workshop with the executive team where we're going to get additional feedback on priorities and goals, as well as starting to begin to draft and create brainstorming strategies. Our research synthesis, People Rocket is going to complete and submit a research synthesis, which will be in a SWOT format. And then our strategic vision draft, which is a draft vision, which will include a draft SWOT strategy map, which will have a vision, our mission, principles, goals and strategies, along with an executive summary.
And SWOT being strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats.
Great. And that is it for us. If you have questions, I'm happy to hear some.
Great. Trustee Perry.
Thank you for this. And AI is a topic that we discussed a lot yesterday, obviously incorporated into the 2030 vision and goals. I'm wondering the degree to which that issue came up as you were doing this work. I would expect the impact to be very different given the specificity, higher degree of specificity and more sort of linear track that we're on, but I assume it's a factor. And I just wonder, are you talking to some of the partners and others about the impact as you look at this?
That's a, that's a great question. I think we've touched the kind of the tip of the iceberg there in our business model canvas. One of the activities we, we presented was what if AI kind of takes over and takes the landscape over a little bit. And I think the Calvert team really identified that is actually a tremendous opportunity for them. And they felt well positioned to kind of answer that. But I'll also let Ajita kind of step in to if she has thoughts there.
I don't, I feel like there's maybe a lag or something.
She's moving, but can I?
Yeah, yeah. We'll go to trustee Williams and we can circle back.
So at the last meeting, so how was it decided that the strategic plan would go through the executive team? Because like if you're not an executive team, you really don't have a way to weigh in on this.
I don't know if we have the timeline slide, but there will be for the full board. So in the, in the whole timeline of this, the executive board was one of the stakeholders. There will be, and Carmen, you can speak to it. I believe a couple of interactions with the full board.
But it kind of throws it off a bit to have like, you know, some board member see it first and involved, and then we kind of get it afterwards. Like, we don't.
Yeah, we didn't see anything. Just so you know, it was very similar to the process that they laid out where it was really more about us asking us questions and them collating some of our responses. But I'll let the team speak a little bit more to the comprehensive timeline, which does include interaction with the full board.
Yes, that's correct. So I believe maybe a few months ago, when we brought the timeline to the board, there was going to be there's going to be interaction points throughout, all the way up until November, when we bring the actual strategic vision back to the board for you all to approve it. And so I believe it is November is the full boards. That means September, September, I think it is. No, October, sorry. Whenever the next full board meeting is before the November board meeting, we'll be bringing it back for you all to weigh in. And at that point, we'll have a full draft of the strategic vision for you all to weigh in on.
Yeah, I think the most important thing to highlight too is that there's a sorry, I think that the most important thing about this to highlight is that the feedback comes in, in asynchronous way, the synthesis happens on an evolving and going forward basis. So there, there's not a, there's not like a, like you'd have it in a committee, a static document and then comments and reactions. There's a a very fluid process by which we're kind of collecting the data and pulling in opportunities for different folks to have feedback based on the cadence of meetings that are already set up and in existence as our, our cadence on board meetings and executive committee meetings. So each month we get to progress forward and there'll be different opportunities for folks on the full board to have touch points and feedback. I wanted to go back just a second because I think there was a little bit of a delay on my end on the internet side to trustee Perry's, I think it was trustee Perry's question about the the way that we're managing a lot of the inputs that we're hearing around AI. And I think they seem to be coming up also in, in two separate ways. One is the application of AI into the core of what we do as a higher ed institution or organization. And the second, which I think is where we're hearing it more is where we anticipate seeing a lot of disruption in the economy as a result of AI transforming work in the ways that it's transforming work. And the sort of preparation of communities for that. So I would say there's kind of two pieces of it that are top of mind. The piece that we are wading through with respect to how we navigate it as an institution. We are at the forefront of a lot of those conversations that are happening across higher ed to really try to wrestle with the application of technologies and being responsible and judicious and thoughtful about its application within the higher ed context to the work that we do. And we're also being, you know, really thoughtful about the way that we think about preparing students for the AI future and the way that it is disrupting industries and our focus, not just on our new pathways, but also on the integration of really durable skills in the context of those technical skills trainings that are in the forthcoming pathways has a lot to do with, you know, our belief, our understanding, what we're hearing from folks about the way that different industries are transforming.
So I of course really noticed slide seven, which has the student feedback. I think it's great. It looks like there's a really strong onboarding happening. A welcoming environment, a lot of connection based on the, the quotes I see here about feeling like it was a really welcoming, diverse community, feeling like there was no hidden paywalls or surprise costs, those things. But the third quote gave me pause. I'm a career counselor. So reading this quote where it says, "I can't afford the luxury of being selective about job positions, challenges and securing interviews despite applying to numerous opportunities." I have a lot of questions about the career services support that and the, and the other end, the job development end of, of this journey, which is really critical in, in this unique type of, of college experience. And my first instinct is something I tell students is that looking for a job is sort of like dating. You don't go out and say, hey, everybody here, I'm single. Any of you? Any of you I'm willing to date? Will you date me? That's not enticing. That's, that's desperate. So actually the approach should be more niche, should be more targeted to what are you truly actually? Do you, is it true that you really don't have that luxury? Or are you just so, you really, really want a job, but that's not a bad thing? So I just, I'm curious about the career services and support and mindset. And just what, what's currently in place? And then what are the plans for the future in terms of supporting that, that exit point?
I think what we're kind of exploring right now with this strategic vision is kind of like, what does holistic support for the students really look like? And that means what happens in the program and after the program? I think that is trying to get at kind of that pain point around that career, like that career focus and that pressure for, for, for getting that job. And so one of the, one of the goals we're kind of thinking about is what is that holistic support? And how can Calbright be a part of that both while that student is at Calbright? And what does it mean for that student after Calbright?
One of the important things I think to know about our process also is that we share a lot of unfinished work. We, we are very clear about where we are midstream and mid-process. And right now those insights that you see are, they are that. They are insights that we've uncovered through our research that we know we need to act upon, but we may not have yet fully developed solutions or the, the team together, not just People Rocket, but all of us. And so that's also where this iterative process comes in. You know, we've identified an issue. Do we need to do now? You know, we've identified an issue. Do we need to do now go back to the research phase and do a little bit more research to uncover this? Do we move into a brainstorming phase to try to think about what the potential solutions are and then identify how that might play out into the future? So it is a process. And I think that what you've, what you're seeing here is a really important and key part of that process where we identify issues and we don't yet fully have solutions for them, but we're working on that.
Trustee Haynes.
So I'll ask my question first and then, and then I'll make an observation. So I know that the board, Board of Trustees gets data from Calbright that identifies by region the number of job openings in a particular field that is, that we have linked to the, the courses that we're offering, the programs that we're offering, the certificates that we're offering. And so I'll, I'll put my question now. Do our, do our students who are in these programs have access to that kind of information as they're making their decisions or at least while they're in the program to know? Because for me, as a, as a trustee, that would be key. And I don't know that any community college does it as well as Calbright. Relative to, we have, we have two or three programs, four programs in which there are tens of thousands of jobs in a region. And when you look at the community colleges that are offering that program, it's either one or none. So, so for me, that would be some reassurance if I'm a, if I'm a mother with children and I gotta, I gotta have a job. And this sounds like it's going to be a really good one because, because when I go out, it's industry specific. I can figure out what that looks like. I can then say, all right, there may be a whole lot of candidates, but I'm one of them. So I think that's, that's the piece that can be missing that because jobs are, indeed, we would like to have, you know, a career center where there's we point you to a job. But, but if we're providing that information ahead of time in a way that they can be making their decisions on that salary. Is there, is, does it have a, I'll call it a ladder, a career ladder? And there are a whole lot of jobs out there. That gives me a little more confidence in it. You can speak to it better than I.
I was saying, how does Brenda get a job, Michael?
If I may, Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. I appreciate the question from both Board Member Haynes as well as Board Member Brown. As it relates to our programs, as you all know, they are structured based on the labor market information, specifically region statewide across the board. And we build our programs based on the emerging need. So you're absolutely right. What this process and strategic visioning process is doing is identifying where gaps exist. And so we're evaluating our student journey from the very onset to the actual end. And so to your great point, building in those elements that empower our students to know what their job opportunities are from the very beginning. And so working with our incredible VP of Learning and Instruction, Dr. McCarty, and as well as our Career Services Vice President, Don Orth. We are building that infrastructure to ensure that they're empowered. And I really appreciate that question because this process is identifying that there's still work to be done. But at least our eye is on the target. It truly is on the target of building this comprehensive student journey that allows for empowerment, because that's what we're doing. The demographics that we're so grateful to support. They need the empowerment, the network building. They need a, an idea, a glimpse into their future. And so that's what we're trying to create as a part of this process.
I'll, I'd love to add one more thing, which is if you hear from Don's team who are on the front lines of providing the services to students in particular, one of the most challenging things that is experienced is building in the resiliency for folks to know and to understand you are going to get many rejections before there is a securing of an employment opportunity, right? There is, there is a difficulty, a grit to this process. We want you to be prepared for it. This is what you can expect in going through the search process. Don't be discouraged, you know, giving folks an understanding of and picture for what that experience is going to be has been a significant part of the coaching support that Career Services has often been engaged in. And I found that to be really insightful as well. So as we develop the services, the, the viewpoints and the perspectives that students raise up are so important to us to know how to continue to evolve our responsiveness in the way that we're supporting learners, both through direct intervention, but also in the way that we modify our support and coaching activities. So I just wanted to kind of highlight a little bit of the relationship between the way that the feedback from students themselves is reflected in the way that the broader vision is oriented, is laid out, and also more, more kind of transactionally in the way that we see a future for modifying our services on an ongoing basis to evolve with what students are actually experiencing out there in the job market.
Great. Any public comment on this item?
President Costa, there's no public comment.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it. Next up on our information and reports section, we have item 5.2, the Calbright College, University of Irvine partnership update.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Agnaldo, and members of the board. We are here today to share an update on the work in progress with our exciting Calbright UC Irvine or UCI. You will hear us say a lot partnership. And next slide, please. We are entering year two of this five-year partnership that is deeply aligned to Calbright's mission and strategic vision. For a quick moment of context, just since not all of us were here when we started this work. This is a highly collaborative, action-oriented work focused on applying data and behavioral science strategies to inform new and responsive approaches to how we support our focus population of working learners. How we design with their needs at the center, as we've been talking about throughout this meeting, and how we serve them especially well. This work puts Calbright at the forefront of innovating in this space and is designed intentionally to expand Calbright's internal capacity to rapidly design, test, and iterate. Ajita and I did not plan our talking points. They were, I was so appreciative of how she framed this from the very beginning and how we do that in a student-centered and equity-centered way. And how we generate and share evidence of effective approaches more broadly to improve educational and career outcomes for working adults. The Calbright and UCI teams have been working closely together since we visited with the board last November. And we are excited to be joined again here today by our leads from UCI, professors Dejou and Richard Arum, along with Ben Castleman from Nudge4 Labs and UVA, and Tom Tash from Ideas42. Internally, we are so appreciative of our Calbright working group and team members across the college who are so deeply engaged in this partnership. We've reached almost everyone at the college through this work in the first year through design sprints, behavioral insights labs, cross-team meetings, lunch and learns, all hands and more. And today we'll hear a bit more of the work overall at a higher level and then dive deeper into the design sprints and the timeline work, which are already having a measurable impact on student outcomes. One quick note as we frame the conversation, which Ajita mentioned as well. Equally as exciting as the impact of the timeline work is the process itself. I realize not everyone gets quite as excited about process improvement, but we are particularly excited about the capacity we're building internally to continue to identify and solve problems in these new ways. And to regularly engage in these rapid cycles of design, prototyping, testing, iteration. And then to scale and share out what works and to learn from that and to learn from what doesn't. This type of approach allows us to continually iterate and innovate. And it allows us to stay at the leading edge of the learning curve and to share replicable approaches that can have potentially much further reaching impact. This is becoming the way that we do our work. And we're excited to share a bit of it with you today, and we promise to come back with more updates throughout the journey with this partnership. With that, if we can move to the next slide, I will hand it over to our partner, Tom Tash from Ideas42, who will be sharing with us today. And all of our leads for the work are on the line as well. And so any, after we hear from Tom, any questions are welcome in any form.
Thanks so much for that great introduction, Marissa. And I also want to thank all members of the Board of Trustees for giving us a chance to come before you today and share some updates from the first year of this partnership. As Marissa just said, our goal today is really to dive deep on just one piece of that partnership and some of the early results we've seen. But before we get to that, we wanted to name a couple of those key takeaways upfront. And the first is that, you know, while we're going to be zooming in on results from a very specific pilot test that we launched, we really view it as a broader proof point for the power of leveraging data and behavioral science to develop new ways to improve student outcomes. And not just as validation for the particular idea or intervention that we tested. And the second takeaway is that what we're showing today is just one building block in a really powerful process that we're building in close collaboration with Calbright to iteratively design and test student-centered, data-driven, and equity-focused solutions. Next slide, please. And speaking of building blocks, we wanted to acknowledge at the top that beyond what we're going to focus on today, we've been busy with a lot of different activities since our presentation to the board last November. On this slide, we've called out some of the different things that the UCI, Nudge4, and Ideas42 teams have been carrying out across all the different strands of measurement and design work that we discussed last time. I'm going to be zooming in on just two of these bubbles, the ones that you see bolded up there. But in addition to myself, as Marissa mentioned, we've also got Dr. Arum, Dr. Xu, and Dr. Castleman, who are helping drive many of the other activities you see up here. And that will be returning to shed light on in future engagement with the board. Today, we're particularly excited to go deep on the inner workings of the collaborative design sprints that we've been talking about since last November and running with Calbright. And also some of the rapid cycle piloting and testing that those sprints ultimately have allowed us to do. And while we're going to share some of the details from one of our design sprints and pilots, we're again doing so less as a way of showing you that particular output or intervention and more as a way to demonstrate the effectiveness of this new approach and the partnership more generally. But I'm getting a little ahead of myself. Next slide, please. I want to start off by giving you a brief orientation to the collaborative design sprints that we've been running with Calbright. Now, these are really an opportunity for us to rapidly build an agenda of testable ideas grounded in behavioral science research for student-centered ways to improve the Calbright model. Working in really close collaboration with the people who are nearest to the student's experience and the student's success at Calbright. That's Calbright faculty and staff. Now, we're running four sprints in our first year of this partnership. Now, we've already completed the first two that you see up there. I think the last session for that third one is happening this week. And we're gearing up to launch the fourth one very soon. And today, we're going to sort of double click on that first sprint we ran with a team of Calbright student support specialists last winter. And then share some of the outcomes. Next slide, please. Now, the structure of these sprints is designed to let teams move from really high-level student-centered goals around things like completing a program or landing a job to more targeted behavioral design concepts over the course of eight sessions that follow a process modeled on Ideas42's own behavioral design methodology. Beyond serving as a kind of entry point to the rapid cycle piloting and testing that we're doing, the participant-driven nature of these sprints make them a really great opportunity to actively build the internal capacity of the Calbright team and leveraging behavioral insights and equity-centered design mindsets themselves, as Marissa mentioned earlier. By working directly alongside experts from Ideas42 and UCI, as we first define a concrete opportunity to use behavioral design, then diagnose potential barriers or bottlenecks holding students back, and finally develop evidence-based solutions to try to overcome them. We not only create innovative concepts for ways to improve persistence, completion, workforce outcomes. But we also equip members of the Calbright team to replicate this approach on their own, well beyond the context of a design sprint. But enough abstract process talk. Well, let's get concrete. Next slide, please. I mentioned a moment ago that we ran the first design sprint with student support specialists last winter from November 2022 through January 2023, more specifically. At the outset, we worked with the team to identify a good opportunity to take a behavioral design approach. And this started with a clear definition of a goal that we were confident we could achieve, and that would translate directly into the student outcomes we care about. And the team ultimately chose to focus on what you see up here. And that's helping students who complete their first assignment go on to complete their next assignment within a week. Now, we chose this specific focus for a number of reasons. First, we, we knew from looking at the data that there were a good number of students who completed the first introductory assignment, but never went on to complete the next, suggesting there was a real opportunity here. Second, we believe that students who complete at least one assignment reveal a stronger intentionality and commitment to completing their program than students who enroll but never actually begin their coursework. So the barriers we're dealing with were less likely to be purely motivational. And third, we knew that there was a strong evidence base around the importance of a strong start in learning environments. And from a behavioral science perspective, helping students make consistent progress in their first few weeks following enrollment would lay the foundation for more durable study habits that could help carry students through to completion. Next slide, please. So once that focus was set, the team then conducted what we call a behavioral mapping exercise to diagnose potential barriers that might hold Calbright students back from making consistent progress toward their certificate. Now, by examining the student experience through the lens of decades of research into the kinds of obstacles that we know often hold people back from following through on goal-oriented behavior, we came up with dozens of potential barriers that might get in between Calbright students and their goals. Now, it's important to state upfront that many of these barriers are not unique to Calbright. They're consistent with what we find in a lot of online or self-paced learning environments, particularly when adult learners are involved. But among all the barriers we hypothesized, we prioritize the three that you see on the screen. First, that students might enroll in a program with unclear and widely varying expectations about how often they could or should work on their Calbright program. Second, that students might form vague intentions to work on their program, but never develop the kind of concrete and detailed plans that we know promote follow-through. And finally, that the nature of a flexibly paced program meant that students with even really strong intentions to work on their program might get derailed by other more pressing concerns relating to things like family, work, or health that might crop up unexpectedly. Next slide, please. We then took those barriers that I just mentioned and translated them into a set of targeted prompts to guide our design thinking as we began considering ways to leverage the toolkit of behavioral design tactics to try to develop ways to help students stay on track. Now, those activities resulted in a wide range of different possible solutions that address those prioritized barriers. And we ultimately chose to take that menu of program timelines that you see highlighted up there and turn it into a pilot. Now, we chose this idea because we thought it would be a really neat way to address the barriers we identified, all three. We know that providing even gentle deadlines or soft due dates have been shown to boost follow-through on goal-oriented behavior with a lot of evidence coming directly from post-secondary settings. Next slide, please. But beyond past research and input from the Calbright team, we also had feedback from Calbright students that really spoke to their desire for more structure to help them stay on track toward their goal of receiving a certificate. Now, the quotes you see on the screen were pulled from students' correspondence with student support specialists, speaking directly to the difficulty organizing a study schedule or planning out when to complete lessons and assignments, and even directly asking for a list of action items and some external accountability. Next slide, please. So to address this gap, we wanted to create a set of voluntary, non-binding timelines ranging from as short as two months to as long as a year, and then guide students through their selection of the best one for them. Now, these timelines would be based on data from past program completers, who we know move at very different speeds, to make sure we were giving students realistic roadmaps toward completion. And critically, they would pave the way for regular outreach from Calbright faculty and staff, who would now be able to check in with students based on how they were progressing relative to their chosen timeline, letting us measure a student's progress relative to their own self-set goals in real time. Next slide. But obviously, there, there's a big gap between a high-level concept like that and something we can actually implement and test in a real Calbright program. So we developed a pilot model with Calbright CRM program, working very cross-functionally with the Calbright team to make sure we created a set of timelines and a process for rolling them out that would allow us to evaluate their impact while also iterating over time as we got feedback from Calbright students and staff. So what you see on the screen here is a high-level overview of how that pilot worked. Now, over the course of 11 weeks from late April through the end of May, Now, over the course of 11 weeks from late April through the end of May, we piloted the timelines with a subset of students who enrolled in the CRM program. Now, all students, regardless of whether or not they use timelines, they had access to the full range of Calbright resources and supportive services. But only students in around half of onboarding cohorts during that period were matched to a timeline and then got weekly updates on what tasks were suggested for them to complete based on their timeline. Now, splitting students this way allowed us to better isolate the effects of the timelines on student outcomes. Because all students during that time period enrolled in the same program around the same time, we can be more confident we're making apples-to-apples comparisons between students who use timelines and students who didn't. So what did we see? Next slide, please. Well, the results have been pretty dramatic. As you can see on the screen, students who are offered timelines make substantially more progress over their first 30 days compared to students who are not offered timelines. Thirty days after enrollment, those in the timelines group had completed roughly 30% of their program on average, while those in the standard group, the sort of traditional no timelines model, had only completed around 19%. Now, this difference is a big deal in terms of magnitude, and it's also statistically significant. It's suggesting that students using timelines get about 50% more done in relative terms. Next slide, please. But beyond the raw difference in completion rates, we also see really encouraging signs that and not only are students on timelines completing more assignments 30 days after enrolling, they continue to work at a consistently faster pace well beyond that. In other words, it's not just an initial bump where students on timelines get a kind of head start. Now, the timelines appear to be leading to an increased pace of completion on a more sustained basis. And if this pattern continues, this means we'll see meaningfully larger numbers of students completing their program over the course of a year. Next slide, please. But even more powerful than the story being told by the numbers, I think these quotes directly from students about their experience using timelines show the value they're adding to the learner experience. In one student's words, "I think the timelines are a great idea. The timeline has definitely been helpful. I wouldn't have anything to measure my pace with otherwise. I think it's a great idea for all students to get the timeline. It helps with my confidence to do the work, too. This is my first online school." And another student offered this, "Not using a timeline is out of the question. It's a very flexible system. It's a very gentle prodding to keep you on track." First, they gave the flexibility to choose. Secondly, they're monitoring and evaluating where we are. Thirdly, they're giving us flexibility to change, and there's weekly feedback on where we're going and how we're doing. I think these kind of student testimonials add really great texture to the results that we see in the data and offer great validation for our student-centered approach to designing for student success. Next slide, please. So where are we going from here? For one, we're working to evolve and expand the timelines approach within CRM and across other Calbright programs. But more broadly, this story of developing and piloting the timelines is just one example of the the bigger portfolio of work we're doing across this UCI Ideas42 Nudge4 partnership. Now, we're excited about the effects that our timelines intervention has had. But the reason we're bringing this to you is not because we want your takeaway to be timelines are an effective way to help adult learners succeed in self-paced learning. That certainly does seem to be the case. But the bigger point is that this model of highly collaborative, rapid-cycle exploratory evaluation is an effective way to help adult learners succeed in flexibly paced online programs. Now, this work is helping us collectively design student-centered solutions, generate evidence on how they work at Calbright, scale them up throughout the college, and finally share out what we've learned about promising practices with the broader field through strategic engagement with the outside world. And we're doing it in a way that's also building the internal capacity of the Calbright team to keep doing this kind of work, both through the design sprint model we shared, but also through broader involvement with the college, such as Behavioral Insights Labs and Teamwide Lunch and Learns. Now, we're off to a really strong start in the first year of this five-year partnership. But it's still early days, and we very much look forward to returning with more updates as we continue to test new ideas and generate new insights. Next slide, please. To conclude, I just want to thank you all for giving us a chance to come before you and share what we've learned in this first year of work and more broadly for your ongoing support of this innovative partnership. And at this point, I'd love to welcome any thoughts, comments, or questions.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Questions or comments on this item? Trustee Haynes.
So I know you just finished telling us, don't focus so much on the timelines, but I'm going to focus on the timelines. And I want, and hopefully what I would like, if not, obviously not today, because I know that this is a ongoing. I don't know what the term, but it's ongoing, and so I understand that piece. But when I, when I look at the demographics, and I mentioned it yesterday at the Board of Governors meeting around Calbright, when we look at the demographics, it's clear that there are some populations that exceed their numbers statewide. And so, any tool relative to that popular, and we're losing populations across the, across the state. It was mentioned in this particular state that there are fewer 18 to 24-year-olds. That's a reality, and we're trying to address that with dual enrollment, all kinds of things. So, but I want to go on the, I want to go on the the time scheduling, because I'd like to know what are the things that are helping our students stay focused? And if the population that I'm, I'm beginning of African descent folks, if, if that population is using this, then that's a great thing. If it's, if, if based on its numbers, it's not using it as, like others in the group, I'd like to know that as well. And I would like to have that data relative to female head of households. Are, are, is this happening with older students versus younger students? Adult learners, excuse me. I'd like to know who's using it and being really successful with it. And I realize that we only have a small population that we're dealing with. I understand all those things, but that's what I want to know. Anyway. That's my question, and it doesn't have to be answered today, but put it on your list. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll say thank you, Board Member Haynes, for that. We really appreciate it because we have those same questions and inquiries. In fact, in our internal team meeting, we asked, digging deeper, we started with a small N-size to test this out because we didn't want to go in assuming it would work. We, we did actually say at the beginning of this, we hypothesized that results are going to be significant. Should we just give it to everyone? But then we said we wouldn't be able to go back and point to intentionally looking at the data, seeing, did this actually move the needle? So we started small. Now we're going to be rolling it out to all of our CRM and then looking at how do we apply it to our other programs, but similarly using that tried-out used data. And so we are setting up the next ones to be able to slice the data in exactly the ways you talked about.
Thirty percent of the program in 30 days? We can't lose sight of that. That's a third, almost a third of the program. And that is an incentivizer for those who are really busy and, and, and to make that not their third possibility in the day or in the evening, but it makes, it pushes that up to say, I can do this.
Absolutely. And our hypothesis is that this population, if we've talked about this, is representative. But as we go to that broader, we intend to look and see, is it really working for everybody? Or is it a certain population or not? So we're excited to come back with more of that. Next, we have.
Let me add, let me add. Can I add one more thing to that, to that comic setting? This is very important because our tendencies, we can absolutely disaggregate the data. We're going to see that in the next iteration. Our heads in the same place as yours, Member Haynes. I think just the one thing that I know I beat like, I beat the drum on very regularly is how critical it is to think about how to translate what is being learned into application in other contexts. And the reason you hear us kind of emphasizing the piece around the process and the piece around being able to critically establish the right hypothesis to begin with and to test that out relative to an implementation context is because in higher ed, we focus so much on singular interventions. You know, we, we take a singular thing. We say the CUNY ASAP program that is highly successful, but we don't examine the pieces underneath the hood that make it so. And we don't understand relatively what has the greatest type of impact unless we create the, the conditions for the way we do our work to change. So the reason this is effective here does not automatically translate to the operating context at another institution. So what's important, if we were to say, is the most critical translatable learning in this moment, it is for institutions within our system and across higher ed to take that critical look at their learning or population, right? Understanding how to create the conditions under which they try out an intervention, but instrument to determine whether it is actually effective before advancing and asserting the success of it. Because even if we look at input and then outcome, if we don't know why we've reached the outcome we've reached, then we will not know or understand how to progress that outcome.
Thanks. Yeah, I think this is really exciting stuff. I mean, this is something that's really showing an impact already. And I was looking at the other slides, and two-thirds of the people are choosing to complete within four months, too, which I think is also better than we had anticipated. I think that's really terrific. So I'm kind of wondering what's next. I mean, beyond, I understand you're going to do more work on these timelines, but what are the other projects in the works?
Sure. I'm happy to take that at a high level, and then Tom is here too and can talk to some of the specifics because this was our very first design sprint. We've done two others already. We started with our student support specialists, then our counselors, then our instructors. We're doing a cross-functional data one next. We have Behavioral Insights Labs. We are working on our learning engagement and design work. We are working on measurement strands, so we have multiple different projects going within this partnership. And we just thought this was a good one to highlight because it's so relevant cross-functionally and because we designed it intentionally. But we have our year two launching focusing very much on the same rapid cycle pilot testing iteration focused on interventions, focused on student voice, focused on data, focused on equity across all of the pieces of the work. And we absolutely, we are planning to come back maybe, you know, every six months or something to talk about different components. But I don't know, Ajita, it looks like, I don't know if you have something or if Tom, you want to speak to any of the specific ideas as well.
I don't want to put the cart too far ahead of the horse here, but as a teaser, yeah, we're, as I mentioned, you know, at the top of the set of slides, we've got a number of these design sprints, and each one surfaces a dozen or so different ideas. We're currently planning a pilot around trying to use short-form video, kind of grainier, mobile-friendly, more authentic sounding voices from Calbright faculty and staff, which we think are an effective way both to engage students in 60 seconds or less, and also a really great way to engage faculty and staff who, you know, really like to get to actually connect with students on a much broader basis. We're looking at building on the foundation that the timelines give us, both to create greater automation, realize more efficiencies in the way we do proactive outreach to students. We're also thinking about possible peer cohorting models we can now do. We've got students in an onboarding session. We know that X of them are going to be moving at roughly the same pace. That opens up a whole new world of possibility in terms of setting up real opportunities for them to connect with each other. I won't rattle on forever because I want to carve out space for, you know, Dr. Arum, Dr. Xu, or Dr. Castleman to jump in and/or Ajita as well, who I think has a, you know, bigger aperture on all the different things we've been working on.
Pardon me, President Costa, but Trustee LaGrand has a question.
Okay, hold on one second. Well, we love that you're here. We'll, we'll catch you after I get the comments in, in room. Go ahead, Board Member.
I was wondering if anybody was going to respond to what he just said before I talk. No. Okay, the other thing, I was just wondering, it may be too early, but are we sharing this information with other community colleges? Is this something that we have in the works? It seems to me like the lessons you're learning could be applicable across the system.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're hot off the presses today with you, so you are our first stop. But we absolutely have a plan. It's in fact built into the concept of the partnership, and we are planning to put out sort of a longer form, either press release, blog post, start small, white paper. And then we have talked together with all of our partners at UCI and Nudge Labs and Ideas42 as well about overtime. Don't want to overpromise. These are hypotheses or ideas, but convenings and other ways that we can conferences where we can be sharing some of this. Again, we didn't want to leapfrog too quickly from our, our early work, but absolutely, it is 100% part of our plan. And possibly even next week, you'll start to see some of it coming out. And just a side note, too, we have intentionally throughout the work been documenting and capturing things across that we will be able to share. And so each time there are some insights that are meaningful to us, we're trying to capture those so that they will be more easily shareable and to the extent that we partner with anyone in a deeper way, you know, we're able to share that more broadly, too. Next, we have.
And I'll just add, just add one more thing, which is we've also, you know, this is things that we'll regularly share a lot with the Chancellor's Office, and it's very aligned with Chancellor Christian's focus on the adult learner population. So we've also begun to engage more closely with other institutions who are similarly prioritizing this community of learners. And so there will be additional forums and opportunities, I believe, to share out this work and also to engage with other system sister institutions around this work.
Thanks. Williams, Aguinaldo, and then Grande.
I say if there, if there, if the other institutions are not in California, sell them the information. I was just thinking about other, like especially practitioners that are involved in the completion agenda. This would be really, a really good like masterclass because we generally don't talk about throughput in this same kind of way that you displayed it. And so it could be really helpful to other institutions. I've been really pressing in my district around unrestricted revenue. And so like you guys could really do consulting for other colleges on how to look at, you know, student completion. I was thinking about my Audible app. So when I listen to books, it'll send me a badge and say, hey, you're a weekend warrior. It does all of these different things. They encourage me to keep listening to the books. And so, yeah, it works, but I wondered, do we have the capacity to compare people who pay for the Salesforce certification versus like, how, how long does it take them to complete? You know, like, so because LinkedIn offers a sale, I don't know if LinkedIn has a Salesforce certification, but you, people pay to go get the Salesforce certification. And my mic sounds really loud, but what's the average completion time for people who pay for it versus, you know, because we're giving it away for free. And so like, what is the motivation? And, you know, we can compare that. But then the other thing is, learning Salesforce is not like a hobby kind of thing. You're really doing it because you want to go work somewhere and use the software. So like, do we have employers on the other side of this thing? And like, do, like, how much OJT money do we have? Because like, if you have, if a student knows, hey, I get an OJT, and then there's an employer at the end of this, they're not going to take 200 days to finish this thing. And so like, if there's no value at the end, then they're probably just like, you know, they'll do it when they do it. But if they know, you know, Southern California Edison, the gas company, because all of those companies, they use Salesforce. And they all have gaps in learning, and then none of them have people who are really like certified. You kind of just learn it if you're working there. And like, so, like, do we have employers lined up at the end of this thing? So that, you know, because if they knew that, they would complete it faster because I can go get a job.
I think we'll invite Michael. We have the benefit of having Michael Younger here with us.
Can we ask IT, like the mics, I don't know, they're doing something weird.
Again, Michael Younger, VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. Board Member Williams, you actually posed a great question, and that's part of what we're building in terms of the workforce development ecosystem. So what we're standing up are partnerships specifically by program area. We also know that the stat is very clear in terms of our research that something like 80% of small and medium-sized businesses, you know, leverage Salesforce, right? CRM technology. And so that is part of our kind of research and design to ensure that we're identifying based on where the, where the student sits, where the, 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 the student is located, what employers are specifically in those key regions. So absolutely, that, that is a central focus for our design for not just the entry and their matriculation through their studies, but also that output of that positively marked outcome.
Next up, we have Aguinaldo, Grande, and LaGrand.
And Anderson.
And Anderson.
To Board, to Trustee Williams's point, it also reminds me of my Peloton app.
To board, to trustee Williams' point, it also reminds me of my Peloton app, which never calls me a weekend warrior. I think that's the farthest thing from what I would be characterized as. So I just wanted to tag on to something that, that Thomas mentioned about the three takeaways and Pam, you touched on this as well. Not only are we taking away the timeline and the fact that we're creating a space for creation, but it's also that we are, our learners should not have a shadow of a doubt that they can do this. It's not like an intervention where you're trying to find more hours in the day, like fit 28 hours into a 24 hour time period. It's just a minor tweak where you're essentially learning how to project manage. And to Ajita's point about learning translatable skills, one of my fears is that they learn in this structured environment that has a lot of scaffolding. And then when you go transition to the next step, you're lost. So hopefully this is a translatable skill that you can carry into the workforce. So my question though, is do the learners in the pilot feel like they're in the pilot? Meaning how disruptive is, is it to roll something out like this at this highly iterative pace? Because if the learner decides to enroll in a different program that doesn't have a timeline attached to it, are they now sitting here going, why don't I have the same tools at my disposal since it hasn't been deployed more broadly?
It's an interesting question. I'll take a first stab and then welcome any of our research partners on the phone as well. And of course, Ajita's perspective. I think this one was done in a pretty seamless way because they had all of the same supports like Tom was mentioning that are students who are in the pilot and not in the pilot. It was just one additional tool that we incorporated into the experience that they were having. Otherwise, when they met with their student support specialist, or when they met with their counselor, or when we check, you know, when our outreach was able to be much more targeted. So all of our students get outreach messages. But these ones, we were able to say, based on the timeline that you picked, here's how you're doing against that, which feels different than, hey, you've finished X percent or something. It's much more personalized and it's much, the student sees themselves and feels themselves in it. And so we, we incorporated that effort in a way that didn't feel like you were in some experimental zone, but was a natural part of the work. And then we also iterated continuously based on what seemed like it was working. Oh, we're getting this response or we're not. Let's try with this next batch of students to get to hone and to, based on data and based on what we were seeing with students, refine what we were doing. So I do think will there be some where it might feel more experimental or something different? Maybe, but I think we've tried to do it in a way that feels really just a part of the work and that it's just part of being a Calbright student. And we on the backend try to be extra intentional. I don't know. I've looked at our numbers and we don't have that many students that are across programs in that same way. And each program is different in its own self, too. They might be on a different LMS platform or they're a different length or a different skill or a different way that we interact. And so I think any of the supports that are relevant and do transfer across with the same impact, we would make sure are available. But I definitely don't think anyone felt like a guinea pig in any way. It was just when it worked, we're able to help it work for more people. Welcome anyone else who would want to comment on that, too.
The only insight I would throw in is pulled directly from some of the interviews we actually held with, with students who were participating in the timelines pilot. Because we rolled it out at a sort of onboarding cohort level, students who were using timelines, I think, thought everyone was on a timeline. And when we talked to them, many of them were actually surprised to know that timelines aren't just a standard staple of the Calbright experience. The other thing I'll say, though, is that students, you know, I don't think they had a perception of being experimented on or anything like that. They, they totally got it. We were very transparent with them. We're building Calbright. It's a new thing. We're trying to make it work. These timelines are actually a new idea. What did you think? How could we make them better? And they totally got it. And they were very open with their feedback. The final point I'll throw in is was kind of a coincidence. One of the students in the pilot had actually done another Calbright program. And so he was actually able to do the experimenter's dream sort of, of have that counterfactual. And his comparison of, you know, a Calbright program without timelines and with was really validating and consistent with the pattern we saw in the data and the direction I think Calbright's going in of trying to actually mainstream the, the timeline model or kind of similar insights and similar structure across other programs as well.
Thank you, President Costa, and thank you, Marissa and team for this presentation. I have two questions, but I want to start with just an observation. Marissa, you had mentioned, you know, here was this group that was receiving the timelines and you thought, well, why don't we just give it to everyone? Which to me, I'm processing that as this is so non-questioning. We anticipate that this is something that everyone would benefit from. This is something that everyone is doing. So therefore, why take a sample? Just roll it out to everyone. And it also made me think of the number of times I've heard data presented on our credit bearing students. When they talk about those who enroll in more units, take more units, complete more units. It's like, it, it seems like it's unquestioning. Of course, that just makes sense. So the first question I have is, was there any part of this that you found to truly be astonishing that you're all like, this was something we didn't anticipate. Wow, this is phenomenal. And then the second one is more along the behavioral research component. We have the opportunity for them to choose different timelines for themselves. What is special or unique about student, students who shift timelines? Because one of the comments that was made is there's this flexibility to change. I would like to know about the students who are changing their timelines. And do they, as this group, get to see other students' timelines? Not identified as this is Marissa's timeline, but the average student takes this amount of time. This is the timeline that you've selected for yourself. Are those individuals now choosing a shorter timeline based on what the rest of the herd is doing?
Those are all phenomenal questions. Tom, I may turn to you first and then piggyback on it as any, but absolutely, because I, I'm so kindred spirit. I'm so appreciative of the questions, too. Tom, I'll let you take it first and then dive in if relevant.
Totally, totally. Gosh, so much to say. I think that question of, yeah. You know, how do we, you know, we don't want to just give students a menu of here are six timelines, pick one. And so we put a lot of thought into how do we figure out the best way to help students make the right choice for them? Give them the information that's relevant, but also, you know, help them ask the right questions along the way so that they get to the right answer. And I think, you know, right now, we've got, we try to keep it lean. We don't want to put a whole bunch of, you know, quick 1000 questions in front of students to try to ultimately get to the best timeline. But we've got a number of questions that we've iterated on with input from students, from some instructors that really get to, you know, how much time do you have? What are other responsibilities you've got? What are your completion goals? What's your comfort with technology? A number of factors that we found are good at sort of predicting whether or not students are able to stick with their timeline. You also asked a really good question about switching. And I will be the first to tell you that one of our key learnings early on was we were a little too ambitious in constructing the initial set of timelines and we have, we rapidly pivoted and extended them. We sort of reshifted. We originally had students on timelines as short as 60 days. I think now the shortest in CRM is 90. And we've sort of reshifted everyone to a longer timeline. We found that early on, to the extent students were shifting, they were shifting almost, I think in every case, to a longer timeline. And so these kind of learnings along the way, though, I think are helping us reinforce what we've done with CRM, definitely giving us directions to explore with other programs that we're going to have different structures to them. And there's going to be different data that we can leverage to try to answer some of those questions. But I think in the spirit of maybe many answers today, based on the conversation I'm hearing, we've got a lot of hypotheses, hypotheses, not necessarily answers yet. But absolutely, a lot of thought was put into structuring that, that initial timeline selection. And then facilitating really smooth transfers to the extent they're needed to slower timelines, adding grace periods for students who say, hey, I need to take two weeks off because of X, Y, or Z concern. I'll pause there. I know that was a whole lot of content. I hope that addressed some of those really excellent questions. And Marissa, maybe I'll volley it over in your direction.
Sure, I'll, I'll make just two additional comments to that. In terms of the wow question, I definitely think when we looked at the results, we hypothesized this was going to be good. But when we looked at that, we all said, wow, for sure. And I think to the team engagement in the process. We, we knew we were excited to do this. We came to you together. We all invested in this partnership and with your leadership and, but seeing the team go through it and seeing how powerfully that experience helped affect them and, and how engaged they were and how excited they were to engage with the students. Also, the data, it wasn't just numbers, right? The fact that our students were speaking to us, both through their engagement with our team and through the numbers, just added so much more depth that I think we hypothesized that. We knew that. We knew this, these design mindsets, but seeing it in practice and seeing how it's impacting the team and how excited they are to continue to do the work in this way, I think was just incredibly inspiring for some of us, for all of us probably. And then one other, I wanted to pick up on one other theme you mentioned, which is how motivating it is potentially to see what others are doing. And Ben, I don't know if you want to speak to any of that, but we have one of the national experts in on this topic of nudge and other things, because I know research has shown that that is a is powerful when you see how, how others are doing and put it in context. And so then I just don't know if there's anything you want to say on that, because I do think we thought over time, how to share, not just the generic, here are your choices, but here's how others are doing. Here's how others like you, or here's, you know, which again resonates even more. Ben, anything to add there in terms of that point?
Just briefly to, to reinforce that. And I think to connect it back to something Tom referenced, I think a very exciting area for future work is in this realm of enhanced peer support and interaction, given the potential within Calbright for students to be more individualized. We want them to be individualized. We want to support them to approach Calbright in a way that works for them and to provide opportunities for peer connection and support. And one of the beauties of this broader partnership is that in addition to the tremendous expertise that Tom and colleagues bring, Dr. Arum, Dr. Zhu have tremendous expertise in the realm of student engagement, peer interactions and support. And so as excited as we are for, I think what the team has collectively achieved in year one, I think we're, we're that much more excited for the year coming forward. And I think a central focus will be in this realm of, of peer engagement support. So I'll, I'll stop there.
My key takeaway, and I hope for many people sitting here today, is that students given the flexibility to change from what we thought was a good path to what is a path that works for them without requiring them to start over to just pick up where they may have left off or taken an off ramp to come back on, is truly helping them get to completion. And if we ever needed additional data to support competency based education and marginalizing as a default credit for prior learning, this is it. And our traditional system that says, if you can't keep up with my timeline, I'm, I'm encouraging you to withdraw and start again at the starting line doesn't work. So thank you.
Thank you. We have next, a board member LaGrande, Anderson, and then back to Williams.
I've granted permission to speak if you'd like to address the board. Harry, are you there?
Let's go back to him. We'll, we'll skip over to Anderson next.
Thanks. This has really been fascinating. You know, I put it in context because, you know, we've been through so much, you know, as Calbright over a period of years. And I think about, you know, how is all this going to be received when it gets to the legislature? How are they going to perceive this? And I think this is all really, really important information. Question for you is those people that completed, correct? Are we tracking them after they complete? And do we know how many of them have actually received a job, received a promotion? Used it from the standpoint of enhancing their current career environment?
Give us an update on Brenda. How's Brenda doing?
Well, you know, again, Michael Younger, VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. I am so thrilled by the questions this informed body is asking. It really means you're deep into wanting to ensure that the students of Calbright are so successful. So I'm grateful for that. So we, we did do a deep dive into our current completion base. And we did a, an audit essentially. And of the individuals that we've observed, which are greater than 150, more than half of those individuals actually are in current full time employment and have received a positive market outcome after they've interacted with Calbright. Now, what we're building is the infrastructure to be able to spot check each and every graduate to be able to understand where they've landed. As you all know, as we work with EDD and others, those indicators are lagging, right? That's naturally the case and has always been the case. Calbright is mandated to ensure that we have a positive market outcome for our student population. So we're working very hard to be able to track each and every student post Calbright. Because the positive market outcome is not just valuable for them, it's valuable for proving this model right at the end of the day. And so we're engaging with partners and others that will provide for a great opportunity for data sharing as well as an infrastructure to be able to do this real, real time. So thank you. I appreciate that, that question from Brandon.
That's really helpful. You know, internally, as you set your timeframes and your goals and your ambitions, you know, if 150 have completed and, you know, are currently employed, 75 of those got an enhancement, what is our, you know, one year, five year, 10 year goal to get that number to?
Yes. So we want that number to be at 100%, obviously. We have just under 300 completers to year to date in our programs across the board. We want to ensure that everyone has the ample opportunity to be very prepared for the first interview and also achieve a positive market outcome via apprenticeship or, or directly into the workforce. And so we're looking at this in a couple of different ways in terms of success. But we also discussed in our last meeting on yesterday, building in more than just post and pre-compensation, but better quality of life, better, you know, looking at the, the quality of life metrics that are going to add so much value to the students' overall success moving forward. We want to ensure, I want to be on record, we want to ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to have a positive market outcome and essentially achieve their goal of, of being very successful and highly skilled in the workforce. And so we're happy to come back and really, you know, stage out and, you know, really be able to establish a goal or a metric specifically at first, second, and third year, once our infrastructure has been fully built out to be able to track more real time, these indicators of success.
We'll go to trustee Williams, and then we'll see if we can get trustee LaGrande.
You just made me think of another question. Does the state give Calbright any WEOWA dollars to help with the follow up?
Yes. So the, the good thing is Calbright is positioning itself to be eligible for those WEOWA dollars post accreditation. We are working very closely to build out the, the infrastructure of being able to not just receive them, but to track them. Right? And so when we talk about pulling those down, building the infrastructure to be able to do that, but we are positioning ourselves quite nicely in terms of apprenticeships and other partnerships to be able to build that infrastructure and the teaming and the capacity to be able to support that as well.
My, my other question was, do you think a token or anything will, will work? Like, because the Salesforce, Salesforce has a really extensive app store. And it could get really expensive to, but like, if you earned a token every time you did something, Coinbase does it. They want you to learn something. They give you cryptocurrency and they just, and you can do whatever you want. But could we have a, like, would, would, do you think Salesforce would give us free apps or credits for the students?
I think it's a great conversation, right, to have with Salesforce more broadly. I know that some of those designs do exist and we're happy to explore those conversations.
Okay, I have a note from our colleague. He's going to pass on his. He said you all had really good questions. So I think his curiosity has been met. I'm just going to make a comment, which is, I think, along with my colleagues, this is really, really exciting work. In part, not because I'm not going to focus on the timeline, but what I like is the infusion of this as an operating model. Ajita was very diplomatic in saying that most of higher ed looks really just at discreet interventions. I'll put it another way. Most of higher ed is not nimble. And this process really lends itself to going out, getting data. And the continuous loop, I think, is really the trajectory that higher ed needs to move in. You know, many of the students we're going to be teaching are digital natives. And so having kind of this stagnant model is quickly going to become, I think, outdated. So anyway, I like the just infusion of this into our DNA as a culture. So anyway, I like the just infusion of this into our DNA as a culture. With that, is there any public comment on this item?
President Costa, there is no public comment.
Great. Thank you. No, no, we're moving on, Pam. I'm going to make you submit your commentary and writing from now on. Next up, we have item 5.3, a presentation on reports and contracts and purchases.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. For the month of June 2023, we have 17 contracts with a maximum total of approximately 1.1 million. To be exact, 1,109,320. Also, in the month of June 2023, we have purchasing purchases totaling 168,574.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
President Costa, there is no public comment.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate the report. Next, we have a couple constituency group reports. First up, we have Mr. Stewart with his academic senate report for Calbright.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. I am the proud president of Calbright's Faculty Senate, and I'm happy to report on the learning, I'll report on several positive developments that are underway within the Learning and Instruction and Student Support Departments. But before I begin, I must have a disclaimer that there will be some acronyms in this document. So President Costa.
As long as you walk us through them, we'll be all right.
Please be aware, I just wanted to put that disclaimer out there for you, and I have spelled them out. So to start, our counseling department, our counseling faculty have created drop-in hours to provide opportunities for students to ask quick questions while having space for building community with their counselors. These drop-in hours allow students to receive prompt answers to their questions instead of waiting for a traditional appointment. Our faculty and counseling are creating short videos to provide engagement with students outside of texting and emailing. And additionally, faculty want to make videos to address common student issues so that students have the necessary resources that they need. Moving on to our instructional side, our curriculum and assessment development faculty are working with key stakeholders to create an automated spreadsheet in order to provide access to student proficiency data. They're working on supporting the redesign of the data analysis program, working with the, with the subject matter experts SME for those acronym deficient individuals who need it spelled out a little more. And I understand that because SME is a little hard. Our representatives from Bakersfield Community College to ensure our programs align for potential partnerships that will allow students to continue with their studies at Bakersfield. Our instructional design faculty are working to redesign and relaunch of IT support, which is our A-plus program and cybersecurity, which is our Security Plus program and workforce, our W, our workforce readiness program. And I'm especially pleased to announce that our Cal, our Calbright College Student Body Organization, or CCSBO, held its first Bright Stars Award ceremony last month. And I'm thrilled to announce that five Calbright faculty members were recipients of the Bright Stars Awards for their remarkable contributions to Calbright. Those faculties are Maisha Willis, Denise Tamal, Cindy Carney, Elizabeth Viracom, and Michael Stewart. Calbright faculty are heavily invested in supporting our students' goals to change the course of their future. Students are the reason why we became faculty, the reason why we show up every day and the reason why we work hard to act as transformational agents of change. The days and nights and weekends can be long and the work can be strenuous, but the knowledge that our efforts are making a positive impact on our students is priceless. Cowboys faculty are honored, grateful, and deeply moved to be recognized by the student community. We remain committed to delivering quality student focused education, working towards continual improvement as we move forward with the knowledge that we are creating value for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to yourself and all of the honorees of the Bright Star Awards. We do not have a Faculty Association report this month, nor a School Employees Association report. So we'll move to item 6.4, which is the Student Body Report.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share this report with you. My name is Jeremy Cox and I'm the Calbright College Student Body Organization President. I'm going to be sharing the July constituency constituency report for the Calbright College Student Body Organization, also known as the SBO. But very quickly before I do, I just want to say that from a student perspective, the new support services that have come online in the past few months have been noticed. And I think that these additional services are making a positive difference in the student experience. Listening to the discussion today in this meeting, it's making me even more hopeful and excited about the future of the Calvert student experience. So thank you for that. We've completed our official first term of student government. We thank our outgoing members for their service to the Calbright College Student Body Organization while welcoming in our incoming members to the second term. As the SBO, we established our goals for the upcoming term as well as completed the National Society for Leadership and Success. That's known as the NSLS Program for Leadership Development. For our events, we have been receiving an increased amount of positive feedback. As our first goal of the SBO, we have created more opportunities for student engagement. We're in the process of selecting our membership to sit on committees for future opportunities, for the opportunities for student involvement, especially for new students at Calbright. Our second goal focuses on furthering our leadership development as the SBO by completing student service training. This is going to help us understand the importance of the student engagement via Slack. And with the help of the Student Office of Student Engagement, we're already incubating some really exciting engagement programs that will welcome students to Calbright to support them as they achieve their certifications. It will also help build a sense of belonging and community. Additionally, we're happy to announce that we created an inaugural Calbright College Bright Stars Awards that Michael mentioned, which celebrated those making a difference at Calbright College. It was a huge success and we had a great turnout as well as a lot of engagement by everybody in attendance. I'm also happy to report that we have every position in the SBO filled this term. That's something that we were not able to accomplish in the first term. We were, we also had more applicants than seats to fill, which was very exciting for us. Our second-term members are myself returning as the SBO president, Mecca La Hiriana, who will be continuing her role as a vice president. Ellen Martinez will be our new chief executive assistant, having moved from her previous role of Commissioner of Student Support Services. Our incoming commissioner will be Joanna Azulo. Dana Wong will be staying on for the second term as our Commissioner of Alumni Services. Michael Y will be continuing with us as Commissioner of External Affairs as well as the delegate for the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. We have a new events coordinator, Melvin Hunt, and then we are also welcoming three new commissioners of academic affairs. We have Alicia Rangel, Elizabeth Walters, and Haley Wise. We're very excited about the second term and I'm personally very excited about showing the future progress of this SBO team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wonderful to hear you are at full complement as an organization. So thank you. With that, I'm going to open it up to members of the public, if there is any member of the public that wishes to be heard.
President Costa, there's no public comment.
All right. With that, and with the business of the Board of Trustees completed, we can now adjourn. Thank you for your participation.